Invite everyone to scan for the flag of allegiance. Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the November 16th meeting, and I apologize I'm wearing my jacket. I feel like I'm froze to death here today, but it's not that I'm not having the, I did feel the temperature go up a little bit. Thank you. The Commissioner Brumall will not be here today. Will she be online?
I don't know. She'll have the opportunity to. She, if she can, she will. But that's right now.
Okay, very good. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of November 2nd? Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of bills. Should we have a motion to approve the financial report?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the financial report? I was looking at the, Steve, I was looking at the statement of revenues and expenditures. The real quick question on the other taxes, we've received about one-fourth, maybe one-fifth of the dollars that we sent out. We did do all the billings?
Yes, we, they are currently being built. They are built during the course of the year.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
What was Steve's last statement out of there when he said?
He said.
They're built during the course of the year. So we're currently without billing.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next up on the agenda, it is now 12:03. We're going to have a public hearing on annexation A4-2022. Lou, do you want to read this in, or is Jean, you're going to read this in, or about the public hearing, or is Mrs. Angela?
Mayment.
Mayment. Are you here? Are you on, you're on the?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I got you. So you're representing Perch Creek Properties. Owner of the property located in the third election district, Cecil County, identified on Cecil County map 33C parcel 0669, consisting of approximately 37.726 unimproved acres and further described in the Cecil County land records in Libra 4887, folio 0199, and is presented for adoption. Jean, can you give me the update on this?
Sure. The Elkton Planning Commission had the regular meeting on November 7, 2022. Further request of Angela Mayment, Vice President of Corporate Real Estate for Estes Express Lines, representing Perch Creek Properties in their request to annex the following parcel of land. Hack map 033C parcel 0669, consisting of approximately 37.73 acres. The parcels currently zoned RM, identity residential under Cecil County zoning, with the proposed Elkton zoning classification of BI business industrial. No one in attendance at the meetings vote for or against the annexation request. On October 18, Cecil County Council voted to approve Resolution 60-2022, which grants consent to the change in zoning of this parcel to be annexed. Maryland Department of Planning, in their November 2, 2022 letter, did not vote, did not note any concerns with the proposed annexation. The Elkton Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the annexation request contingent upon cooperation with Cecil County Emergency Services for access to Maloney Road if necessary. No other access to Maloney Road is intended by the developer or purchaser.
Very good. This is a public hearing. Does anyone on the board, first of all, have any questions or comments in regards to this annexation? Does anyone on the floor have any questions or comments in regards to this annexation? Ms. Angela Mayment, do you have any comments or questions that you want to raise to us or add to this?
I'd be happy to just give a little brief explanation of what we have going on there in Elkton. We've been a business in the Chesapeake Boulevard Business Industrial Park for almost 20 years. We have been good corporate neighbors and citizens. As a matter of fact, we put the light in that is on the main thoroughfare that leads into the business park when we did our development to help support traffic in the area. And we did most of the paving along Chesapeake Boulevard as well at the time. So we're thankful to be at the point that our business has grown. As you can see, during the pandemic, transportation has become even more important than it has been in previous years. And the growth that we've seen in the area has already led us to do a 58-door dock addition. But as part of the growth there, you know, we currently have just under 27 acres, and we see the ability to do another dock addition. And the adjoining land that had been presented to us by Perch Creek would allow us to build a maintenance facility for our equipment, which would be five bays, about 10,000 square feet with the bays and the office, and the rest would be paid for parking. Now, not all 37 acres will actually be developed. A lot of that acreage will be left for the forestry preservation as per the requirements for development in the area as well as wetlands. We're going to work with the county on an emergency lane to take them out where they kind of need to go. And then, you know, we, as far as our paving, it probably will lead us to about 850 parking spaces for equipment. But I want to make sure that everyone understands that a lot of that parking is coming from the existing lot as we've built out the truck terminal. So it's, it's not all going to be additional truck trips, et cetera. Also, a lot of that new equipment that will be parked on this additional land will be there for maintenance and repair with that shop. So we will not be going in and out every day with loads. So it's not a direct one-to-one type of comparative. We've been excited that we've seen about a 20% increase in employment in this area since we did the 58-door dock addition, and we anticipate seeing another 25% to 30% increase if we are able to get this annexation and develop this land for our maintenance facility and our parking. As we have grown into the size of facility that we have now, it's really important to have a maintenance facility on site to make sure everything is in good order of repair and safe for ourselves, our customers, and the community. You know, we, we've enjoyed being there. We think this is a good community. We've got great employees. So we'd like to see our expansion kind of supported even further by the town of Elkton by annexing this land proposal into the town. And if that's done, we anticipate being able to close on this land in the next 30 days and start presenting our plans for review as would be normal before we did any kind of future bill.
Thank you.
If I have open to any questions that there might be Mr. Mayor and the Commissioners, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Angela. Does anyone from the board have any questions for Angela? Is there anyone on the Zoom meeting that has any questions or comments in regards to this annexation? Seeing none, this public hearing is now closed at 12:10. I'd like to ask the board, do we have a motion to accept the annexation, annexation A4-2022 for adoption?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this adoption? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming back to Elkton.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Look forward to continue years and years.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, next up, we have Mr. Joe DiNunzio, proposed Artesian interconnection Route 40 at Delaware Line. I guess we kind of put you on the spot with this, didn't we?
That is perfectly fine.
I will tell you, Al did that last week when he was here at the meeting. He said, no, we'll bring Joe in, and he'll come over here and make this happen. I think what we, I think what we wanted to know is just kind of where we're at with the interconnect from our standpoint, your standpoint. It's great to have the whole team in here, and can you give us kind of what you think we need to do or where we're at, or?
I certainly can. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Always a pleasure to join you. And no, Al didn't put me on the spot. That's because of his job. We rule with the punches every day. As you know, we already have a existing interconnection with the town of Red Hill Road, and there's two other interconnections where we generally buy work, Bell Hill and Route 7 as well. What's proposed here, and the agreement had been shared previously, is a second connection on Route 40 with the idea of being able to help the town assure reliability of service on that side of town, particularly as the nano medicine plant is to open soon, you're developing South Fields. Being in the water business, we are all too well aware that your sources of supply are fine until they have a problem. But when a well has a problem, or suddenly there's a water quality issue in your treatment field that you need new water treatment, it can create a problem. And we think that for the town, this additional interconnection would be another critical component of being able to assure supply, particularly in these kinds of circumstances. The terms of the agreement are consistent generally with what we have in the existing Red Hill Agreement. The only things that have changed are things like the quantity. It would start off with a minimum 50,000 gallons a day take with a max of 200,000 gallons a day, with the ability to raise that to as much as a million gallons a day with a minimum adjusting to 25% of whatever the maximum is. The reason for a minimum take is to keep water fresh, because if water doesn't move when it's needed, suddenly it's not fresh. That's not the ideal operational way to handle those matters. So that's why we would always propose a minimum. The rate that we're proposing is exactly the same as the rate that the town pays at Red Hill Road, so no change there. And let's see, up 10-year term with up to five, five-year renewals, is what's proposed within the agreement. We understand, and we've worked with KCI. We've done the analysis of the impact on the town system. It's really a short piece of pipe on either side of our systems if needed, and then installing the meter ball at the state line. So in that connection, in terms of the construction, it's a relatively straightforward project. But with that, I'm hoping there are any questions?
Joe, we have a construction cost estimate of $412,000. It might look at that, is that for the interconnect?
That's correct. That's for one of the alignment. What we put in the analysis is to have the alignment running along the south side of Route 40, and really depends on the field condition, the existing utilities in that area. And there could be another alternative alignment needed along the north of the Route 40, and that would be a longer run and will need a jack and core underneath the Route 40. So the one included here with the cost estimate, 415 plus is for the shortest run.
Very good. Do you expect any complications with this at all, or how do you feel about this? I mean, what's our obstacles?
So the first analysis we did is collected all the hydraulic information, did the hydraulic analysis. The supply will be at a higher pressure than comparing to the roof, the town's hollow zone, which is the down, where it's the water from the proposed connection along Route 40. And so we did a further analysis, which is included in the MAMOS, made it to the town, that included the control analysis, what control equipment would be needed for, keep the pressure and slow down to meet the agreement of what is proposed in agreement, and also to not impact the town system operation, mainly not to overflow the Thompson Tower and not impact much on the well three. Control valve will need to be implemented as a necessary component, and with the controller and also control panel. There'll also need to be certain type of communication between the meter valve box on the Alpian side. There'll be two meter box, like valve box, one on the Alpian side and one on Alpian side. So there needs to be some communication between the valve box along Route 40 with the Thompson Tower, because we don't want to overflow that water tower. The valve needs to be shut down when it's approaching. So we have the recommended equipment included in this analysis and also included in that cost estimate. So the trigger for this Route 40 connection is mainly from the clean facility, because their Phase 3 demand is projected at 250,000 gallons per day. And we have a latest schedule from them. So they have, looks like their Phase 1 is anticipate to be in place in early 2023, and that, that has a water demand of 28,000 gallons per day. And their Phase 2 is looking to be in place in late 2024 and early 2025. And the water demand in that phase is 50,000 gallons per day. And the town system currently has the, has capacity to meet the demand in Phase 1 and Phase 2. And their Phase 3, which is the final diagram, they're looking at that approximately would need a demand of 250,000 gallons per day in somewhere in 2027. And that's after their Phase 3 completion and full layout. So for this, for the town system to meet this demand, plus the future, future demand in the, from the, currently in Southern South Fields, and the town would need additional water source, need all this demand. And the proposed Alpian supply along Route 40 would be a convenient backup supply to provide additional water to the town and also serve as a backup for emergency situations in case the town needed. However, for the long, long term, just looking at the entire town system and the existing demand and future demand, we do recommend the town continuously Lawrence your own water resources on the, like within the town, town payments, and so in order to be more self-reliable and more self-sustainable.
Thank you.
One of the things that we're getting used to know about is, in conjunction with this, there's a force main, a construction on Chesapeake Boulevard also.
Yes.
Because you can't just keep pumping water and your system is going through the wastewater. So that's a project that I think you're working on specs now on that?
Yeah, that's right. So there's two, like two types of demand. So we just talked about the water demand and the other is the sewer demand. And that will require their Phase 1 and Phase 2, to accommodate their Phase 1 and Phase 2, we're currently working on upgrading the existing force main at the Chesapeake Boulevard pump station. And that is in the permitting phase, we're done, we're done with design. And right now, we submitted our final signed copy of the construction documents to MDE, and they're doing their final review. And we anticipate the permit will be issued shortly, and we can start the bidding phase and construction phase for that one. And we anticipate construction can start, the bidding and construction phase can start like early next year or later this year. And that should be handle all the proposed flow from Phase 1 and Phase 2 from clean facility. In order to accommodate the Phase 3, and that will require, also require the Chesapeake Boulevard pump station upgrades, and when we did the design for force main, we had that into consideration. So the force main is, will be capable for the, for the future pump station upgrades before the Phase 3 can be, will be, will be fit for there and then start it to dis 异水 to the.
Do we have an estimate on that yet?
For the force main?
We're saying.
We have a preliminary estimate for that. And, and right now, since that, that force main is at some certain section, it'll be mainly construction by direction, directional drill to minimize the disturbance of Chesapeake Boulevard. And some of the section, because there's already multiple utilities along the pass. So at some, some of the section, the force main needs to be at a deeper depth. And right now, we have a preliminary cost estimate around 800,000 dollars for that force main upgrade.
Thank you, Legion.
Thank you.
Lou, what do we need to do to move forward with this?
Well, I think that the Artesian side, they probably want an agreement.
That would be nice.
Yeah, because they're not going to initiate their construction when they're in without an agreement. So if you want to start that, that process with Artesians, who actually the board should review or have council review the agreement, which is very similar to the original agreement.
How does the board feel about that?
I'm good.
I'm on it.
Yeah, so we're good. So let's go ahead and review exactly what you were saying.
All right.
Review the agreement. And, and I would say that how important these interconnects are, and I'm going to try to give a little history, and sometimes when I give history, it may not be the exact, but my understanding that municipalities over 10,000 people had to have a backup water supply source to 25% of their daily use, is that correct in saying that?
Well, my recollection was that MDE told the town at one point, you needed to have a backup source of supply sufficient to meet the town's demand should your surface water plant not be able to operate.
That's correct.
Yes.
That was right.
Okay. And that's why these interconnects are so important. And, and I'll use, I can actually use three examples of why it's so important. Two years ago, maybe three years ago, we had our pumps went out at the Red Hill reservoirs, and we needed to use the interconnect on a daily basis to make sure that we provided water for our residents. I mean, it was, it was a real huge shock to us, but it was important to have that. Secondly, when we have the floods that we have in Elkton, which we'll kind of talk about a little bit today, and that floodwater comes down, and we can't even treat that water that goes to our water plant because it's so muddy, right? And we have to shut down our plant, and then that's another reason why we would pull that. And just recently, we've been doing the UV upgrade.
Shut our plant down to install UV protection.
So. Now, when we get to that agreement, we're going to ask for a huge discount with all the volumes, of course. So John, make sure you fill all that in, because we want to make sure we get that. But Joe, it's been a very important relationship with Artesian, and I think that this interconnect will be on its way here soon.
Very good. We appreciate working with the town. Louis, if you need a copy of the most recent version, just let me know. The last one was when we made the change on the application of Maryland State law at your request.
Okay.
If you need anything, just give a shout.
Absolutely.
And you know, as I recall, when we talked about that interconnect issue, I think the town and all of us sitting here, we were very skeptical because we were going in Bowland Lane. I don't think we understood it particularly then. We do understand it now, but it was something new. It was not, it was worth it. No. And again, we appreciate being able to assist and working with the town. I think it works for all of our benefit in the end. So we're glad to be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Appreciate you, Mark.
Always got a dust with me. Couldn't beat even the F-ball, so I'd be on when I can.
That isn't what you told me. Okay, next up, we have Resolution R10-2022, Cecil County Hazard Mitigation Plan Adoption. We've got John Donahue, Deputy Director, Cecil County Department of Emergency Services here. Let's talk a little bit about the, the plan adoption.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you for having us today. We really appreciate it. I'm actually going to kind of dump on our new emergency planner, Michael Burke. We kind of, at least introduce the plan, what it's about and what it means to the council, and then we'll open it up for a while.
Thank you. Look, Michael, again?
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us opportunity. Go back, Colonel. I'm a current new position, but for most part, I grew up here in Elkton, actually, so it's kind of nice to see some other cases. Still live in Cecil County, so it's very nice to have the opportunity here as emergency planner. So hazard mitigation plan is something that we have to do for FEMA every five years. And this turn is why we're coming to local municipalities for the adoption. This process has been in the works since almost a year ago, since March of 2021, where we went around again and we were trying to get input from local towns and municipalities. So part of this hazard mitigation plan is starting at the local level, and then we are kind of like a mediator between the state and local municipalities, identifying threats and the hazards as well. So Mary mentioned one of the floods, and that is one process we got. Historically, Cecil County is known to have floods quite, quite a bit in certain areas. So we want to be mindful of that. So just to give you a quick historical information, the years passed, from federal declarations from 2012, when we had Hurricane Sandy, 2011, tropical storm Lee, just to give you an idea of that it has occurred and could occur. So we're here today to request for the adoption of this plan. This plan incorporates the whole county and also includes specific municipalities as well. So we want to include all municipalities on this hazard mitigation plan. And the conclusion of this adoption, we will come back again in another later time for our, starting the new hazard mitigation plan, which is going to be revamped for another five years. It's what we're here today to do. And then we also want to come back out from our position and be more of a mediator connecting between the local municipalities and us not just on an emergency basis, more closely connected. So that is our goals. We want to try to do future projects, working on our consumative operations plan, our emergency operations plan as well, and then increase our interface, like I mentioned before, increase exercises as well, introducing new faces, post-COVID type exercise related to Emergency Operations Center, and doing more of our mass communications and understanding of that before emergency occurs.
Perfect. I did have one question. On page 150 of the, of the plan, there's some language here I don't quite understand exactly what that means. It says, freeboard requirement. What does freeboard mean? Help me understand that one.
You might have yourself a question?
It has a check by her name. Oh, I got Jean Minner back here. He's going to tell me what it means.
Aye. In our floodplain ordinance?
Yes.
If you're going to build the floodplain, then when you build, you have to have the lowest finished floor two feet above freeboard. So there's a, there's the highest level we anticipate flooding to occur. The lowest finished floor has to be two feet above that.
Understand.
To prevent damage.
Yep. Well, there was one, it just clicked as soon as you started saying that, because we just had some floods up in Rising Sun in a trailer park, and they were talking about repairing, rebuilding the trailer park. Well, freeboard would have to be 11 feet in the air, which means we would have trailers themselves.
Wow.
11 feet in the air in order to leave that. So that's.
Is that going to be required for them to do, or?
Well, that was built, I believe, well before some of the floodplain requirements that FEMA has had.
And they don't have a check by their name, I want to, I want to tell you. Rising Sun does not have a check by their name. Maybe we should take the check out of Elkton. I don't know. I've got to think about that one. Thank you so much on that. And I want to also say, you know, yesterday, Rob asked me in, and Michelle, and Jean Minner, and a few of the other members of the team hosted, the young fellow from?
Chris.
Chris, and what's the name of his company?
Underwood.
Underwood. And I really appreciate you guys coming out, because I think that shows the partnership that we should have. And, and I think that we as a team can do much better things together.
I think so. And Michelle and I had some discussion just regarding reference to that and the fact that we. and the fact that we, you know, we need to be better partners. And we'd like to be a group of all the municipalities for emergency management together so that we can share what we have. For example, we have our code red, and perhaps we should be using that. We don't want to be crying wolf. So that's our system that we can draw a line around the community and say, send them a message. We don't want to use that by crying wolf.
Yep.
But there are probably more times that we should be using it. For example, if floodwaters are coming down from Chester County, we need to draw a line around Elton and say, and start saying, bagging your doors and sealing up all of the holes because the water's coming.
And you know, I have to tell you, Louis has always been real good with knowing the level. At what bridge do you check?
There's a USPS site at Bruce's Bridge. It's totally cubic feet per second through that site there. And of course, half of the water sheds in Chester County, so it's raining hard up there. It doesn't even have to rain hard here. What? No, it's a 52 square miles.
So he does a good job of warning us.
That's our code grid. Identify threshold. Now we, perhaps we can take some electronics, hook it to that flow meter, and when it reaches that point, alerts go out to the community.
And that makes sense. It makes sense. Does anyone from the board have any questions or comments in regards to this mitigation plan adoption? Lou, do we have a proclamation we need to read?
Well, yes. A resolution of the Mayor and Commissioner of the Town of Elton adopting Cecil County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Mayor and Commissioner of the Town of Elton recognize that Elton is vulnerable to natural hazards, which can result in economic hardship, threats to public health and safety, and the loss of life and profits. Whereas pursuant to Section 322 of the Federal Housing Management Administration Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, states and local governments are required to develop and submit a mitigation plan that outlines processes for identifying their respective natural hazards risks and vulnerabilities. Whereas the Town of Elton acknowledges the requirements set forth in the Act to have an approved hazard mitigation plan as it pre-recludes it to receiving posts, disaster hazard mitigation grant program funds, and pursuant to the Act, Cecil County Department of Emergency Services in cooperation with Cecil County Government and officials and citizens of the Town of Elton developed the Cecil County 2022 Hazard Mitigation Plan. Whereas the Cecil County 2022 Hazard Vulnerability Assessment and Mitigation Plan recommends mitigation activities that will reduce the risk of loss of life and will probably affected by natural hazards affecting Cecil County and its municipal government. Now therefore, it will be resolved. Mayor and Commissioner of the Town of Elton hereby adopt 2022 Cecil County Hazard Mitigation Plan, including its implementation strategy.
Do we have a motion to accept Resolution R 10-2022?
Second.
A motion and second and a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We appreciate your cooperation.
Thank you so much. Okay, Lou, you're up next.
And we have a proclamation on small business. Small Business Saturday. A proclamation of the Mayor and Commissioner of the Town of Elton declaring November 26, 2022, Small Business Saturday in Elton. Whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, approximately 32 million small businesses in the United States employ nearly 50% of America's workforce. I can't believe that was Amazon, but I think that's what he said. Whereas $68 for every 100 hours invested as a small business stays in the community versus $43 spent at non-local establishments. And whereas the Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Elton support local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. Now therefore, it be known that the Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Elton hereby proclaim November 26, 2022, as Small Business Saturday in Elton, and encourage everyone to support our local business community. And be it further known that these unprecedented times, it is vital that we come together as a community and support our neighbors by supporting their businesses.
We have a motion to accept proclamation P 38-2022, Small Business Saturday. Summued. Got a motion? And a second, any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor? No she carries.
That's what I have in mind.
Okay, very good. We had a multiple agenda change since Friday. We had, I think, we had Elmer Justice was originally going to show up on the agenda. He called and postponed, and we also had a part of Southfields that wanted to postpone. But in doing so, I know that Sidelines wanted to give an update on their project, and I'd like to invite Mike Brown to come down and give the board with Brad Corillo an update, the Sidelines group, give us an update of what's happening, and we'll hopefully give you an update of where we're at.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time, and thanks for the last minute change. I'm going to go ahead and try to share it now. Since we. Is it going to work? There we go. You got it now.
Perfect.
Great. So since we had met last in the town, and Brad and I had committed to trying to work together to build a park, we had said that we were going to immediately start by getting a company to do a flyover rendering to kind of show our vision, our cooperative vision that we've talked about now for several years, as well as do a flyover rendering that we could both share with prospective hotel operators and investors for some of the other properties that surround the sports park. That is complete with the exception of some final touches that we're waiting on. We hope to have some of your impressions as well here in stuff. So we just wanted to start with a slideshow of that and kind of give you just a general idea of where we are. So this is an overview of the sports park. I'm going to share this with you all, by the way. It'll be up on our website. We'll send you a link to it. So I will show you this, a few slides that give you the overview, and then a video that has some music to it that we're going to post on our video, on our website as well. So this is the new pump house, as you can see, which we know is currently constructed off of Frenchtown Road. And the water tower that we're working on, as well as the sports park, 213 being up here in Frenchtown. You can see kind of the vision for all of the fields, the hotels, the single-family homes, and the apartment complex. And our hope with this is to allow people the idea to understand what it is we're trying to build. An all turf sports park has a huge draw in itself because of people traveling from far away and not having to have canceled games because of the ability for these turf sports parks to drain a massive amount of water and for people to be able to play throughout the rain, as well as right after a rainstorm occurs. But what separates us from everyone else is the spine of the backbone of the project. The backbone of the project, which is just right down the center of our sports park. As you guys know, and as the mayor and I have discussed forever, that this has to be something that is Disney-esque when it's done. It has to be something that separates us from everyone else around us. Everyone wants to be in the sports park business. It's a $7 billion a year business nationally, and it's growing, but it is competitive. And we need to make sure that we separate ourselves in some way from everyone else that's around us. As you may have seen yesterday, Harper County was, once again, thanking Ripken Baseball for all of the sports that it brings there, not because of the minor league team that plays there, by the way, but because of all of the tournaments that is drawn, are drawn there because of their sports park. And that's one sport, baseball only. And we're looking at doing multiple sports here.
And I'd like to make a comment on that number. I had a little, let's see, I had it here before you moved you on. But I believe it said it was the economic impact for generating over $47 million just for one season, for the 2022 season, the active season. That's a lot of dollars in the community.
It is. It is, and I think we can far surpass that. I truly believe that because we're going to have multiple sports. This is just a rendering of the hotel. You know, we don't have Hilton or anyone else locked in, but we thought, understanding what a Hilton True Hotel looks like and using that as a comparison, as a backdrop for what we're trying to do here. We do know that Hilton True has a sports park type of design that allows for cleats and storage of sports gear. So we thought it'd be a nice, hope to try to get them there if we can in the end. But for now, it's just a placeholder. We asked our architect, and by the way, this was developed by the director of architecture from University of Penn, who has his own firm as well. We asked on our four acre plot that Brad and I own, where we have two acres that are committed to hotel. We said, listen, what could we do that's interesting outside of the box for the other two acres? Because we don't want it to just be a parking lot. They came up with an idea. We said, you know, an open air market or a food court or something like that. And this is what he came up with, and we thought this was an outstanding vision. It gives us a place that we can either operate or lease to whatever food vendor or whatever type of business we think would attract the most, depending on the venue that's going on, or excuse me, the tournaments that are going on at the time. But we thought that this was an interesting play of kind of an outdoor theater, similar to what you see maybe at Baltimore Harbor, where you have the steps that go up, where we could have live music, where we could have people come in and kind of get away from the sports park, but stay in the Town of Elton, where we continue to keep the economic driver here in the town instead of in the rest of the county where the state can. I have another view of that, of the backdrop of the hotel. This is what separates us from everyone else, and this is the backbone of our project. You know, we have 650 feet long total. When you look at it, it's 50 feet wide. It's two and a half stories. It has the open air market that you can walk through as the first layer. The second is an air-conditioned, glass-enclosed space that can either be leased or used for corporate events, or depending on what partnerships we develop over the next several months, we will, we may add people that want to use that for some sort of a venue to operate out of. On the top, though, this is what really, we think, separates us from everyone else. We have two areas, one in the front, one in the back, that can be used as restaurants. It can be used as microbrews. I happen to know a guy that runs a microbrewery that's pretty successful in the area. I'm not going to mention any names. And we have an area for possibly open air movie nights. We have the ability to, we had envisioned, play top golf or something similar out into the fields. All of this from this top area that gives us kind of a view from two and a half stories of. On top of that, we have a running track around the outside of it, which is shown in the pink. We have elevators, obviously, to get people access to the roof. This is actually a roof structure, which you'll see in the video. This white area is actually a metal roof structure, which gives some shade, but provides some kind of architectural cleanliness that we think is really cool. And this would be kind of an area that you could use as a restaurant, something to oversee the tournaments. More importantly, it could be something that you can segregate some of the things that are going on. You know, the front two fields that we talked about, having fenced in separately so that we can do beef and beer wine, food test tastings, music events, that we could actually have a kind of a VIP area for people to either congregate or meet with coaches if you're a young athlete and we want to get away from the fray so that they can have a conversation. All of this can happen up on that top layer, as well as some additional seating that would be up on top. You'll notice that there is kind of a covering across the windows. This is actually a mesh, similar to what you would have seen in Disney or in Epcot, where you can see through it, but it actually provides shade for some of the people that are walking around the area. At the same time, it's blocking the reflection for the people who are athletes on the field so that we're not getting a reflection of the windows as the night sun goes down or the morning sun comes up, because that is a concern when you have that much glass right adjacent to the fields. And this is kind of the big picture, looking back from 230.
So Mike, looking at the, I'm going to say you're calling it the backbone, but the green that's on top there, that's not for sitting or?
No, that's actually, it's depicted as a green roof, which is a grass top roof. And I forget what they, what they call that. Yeah, a roof garden or maybe you guys would have a better clue of that, but it is not turf. It is actually grass.
And the intent of that, of having that green, is there are some credits that we could take advantage of for having, you know, rooftops, gardens, and stuff like that that we were thinking about, being able to incorporate that, to make that track filling in that outdoor space, actually filling an outdoor space rather than sitting on the roof of a building.
Yeah, too many times when you develop these things, I think all you see at the top is the air conditioners and the air handlers, and we're trying to kind of make this a little more inviting. A separate selection, you know, it doesn't have to be all coverings that he said this, and we could also do wood slats, and I just kind of wanted to show that as an option. We could have wood slats on the side of the building instead of that mesh covering. As far as cost, one to the other, it's pretty comparable. It's not like much more expensive. You kind of get the idea that it gives it a different look, and from the side, it certainly gives it a different look, but it still blocks that reflection of the glass from that second floor.
You think that would be more adorable than the mesh?
You know, I don't know, but I think there will be some more conversations about that as we get closer to see what will last longer, what it's really made of, and maybe have some trips where we go see it when we get a little bit closer to it. Because there are places that have incorporated both of these that we know of, and I think I'd like to go see them myself, and wait all of you to come as well.
I'd like to go.
And you kind of get just a general idea, you know, if we're talking about building something that's going to be inviting, if you've ever had travel sports like I have with my kids, and you've gone to places, you're not going to a place that has this kind of amenity in the center of it. You're not going to have the kind of cheese steaks, crab cakes, crab soup, the things that we're known for in Cecil County and that we're able to produce here and share with people from around the country who are going to want to come here. A quarter of a million visitors a year. And then the final overview, kind of just the hotels and the market that we were talking about with the auditorium giving a full view of that overlay on top of the board. So I'm going to share this with everyone. You know, Brad and I are super excited about it. If you get just two minutes now, I'm just going to play the video to give you an idea of what that looks like. Can you see that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to question. I was just envisioning that track. Nice cross-country track. We try, high schools using it, running, it's cross-country. Just a place for a safe environment. I was just looking at that. How wide? Is that like two, three lanes or?
Ah, you know, I don't know if we're that, quite that far along. And as a rendering, we love the ideas. You get to the actual architecture will be a nice step, you know. But we. but we love the ideas and we're happy to incorporate all of them, to be honest. I agree. Totally agree. So we just wanted to come and say, listen, we're still, we're still committed to what we said we would do. We've obviously gone, we've gone ahead and completed the rendering, but we've also started the feasibility study with SMC, which you guys know about. We had invited you to the meeting as well, and I know Rob had attended on the council's behalf. It's been fantastic. As of now, they're saying we have, they believe we'll have an A rating when we come out of this for both the area, the location, the feasibility, the finance, and the payback of the bonds. So we are encouraged by the initial reports, we have a follow-up meeting with them Tuesday of next week, and they're telling us that our feasibility study will be done on January 16th, that'll be the first draft that comes back to us for review. So we're in line. I haven't talked to the mayor or anyone recently about where we are in the bond process. I know that you guys are getting rated both for us and for the TIF situation, maybe we can help deal with that as well.
No, that's good. So your feasibility will be back around January 16th.
Correct.
Which will give us some information of whether, you know, it's the right thing to do, but regardless of that, Lou, where do we stand with Davenport and the process? I know that they, did they, did they ask for paperwork from the finance department? Where are we staying at here?
I don't know, I haven't had any contact with them since the last time I've had to get ahold of her.
Well, we wanna, we wanna really push that process, we wanna be ready. Whether we move forward with this feasibility, if it comes back bad, but we wanna be ready. Do you guys agree with that?
I do.
Yeah, I think, I think this board up here.
Could I comment?
Yeah.
I know, I just, my brain went dead for two seconds. She was waiting for the feasibility study to come back.
Okay.
That's why we haven't heard from her. She wanted to see that in order to work on the credit rating.
Well, that answers that, maybe we need to find out, does she need anything else from us as we're building?
I know, I'll find out, but I know that the feasibility study was something that she needed to look at.
Okay.
Well, if I could comment.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, well, two things, one is, we actually committed to paying for that process if we needed to, because we understand that they need to be in lockstep in order to hopefully meet the construction schedule that says the beginning of next quarter, if it works out well. I realize there are continuing delays that occur, but we're hopeful that that can hold. Secondly, I don't know if the feasibility study keeps the town from having to be rated when they're gonna, we're looking to do TIF funds or whatever it may be. So is there any purpose in delaying it to the feasibility study if we can work in lockstep together? Because we're still putting quite a bit of money out, trying to get to this endgame.
Hey, I apologize for interrupting. Can I stop sharing?
Oh yeah, sorry.
It's okay.
There you go, I'll stop the sharing.
I wanna see if there's anybody online.
Sure, there you go.
Who might be able to answer your questions. I wasn't sure if there would be, but I wanted to see if there's anybody there. Okay, sorry about that.
Well, I, I think I'll actually reach out to Davenport myself and see where Brad with that.
I'll send a thing to her and ask her, because she can go forward with the rating.
Yeah, we definitely wanna go forward with the rating, whether, whether, whether or not this comes a portion for us or not, but we definitely need to have that, know what that rating is. I mean, we've done a whole TIF district for the whole town, and we wanna make sure that...
I think the point was, if you're bonded, if you get your rating, you could move ahead with your TIF process as well, and if this didn't happen for some reason or another, you could, you could have.
Well, consider that done, and hopefully this will all be done by the time we hit the feasibility, right?
Right. Yeah, my understanding is that it would be weeks for the bond rating, if it started not in the middle of the season. So I imagine that we'll be behind the ball again in getting this done. But just, albeit candidly, it is frustrating, because we are putting a ton of effort and money, we have settled the property, we are working forward on this, just as we committed to.
Now, I hear you loud and clear, and I think the board here is loud and clear, and I think that, using the words "think," I know is the wrong word. I know that this board is on board with this project and the whole project, and we wanna see this thing happen. I know there's been a lot of obstacles, I mean, this, the inflation, the house building, is, a lot of things are coming to somewhat of a halt right now, and it concerns many also.
It truly does, you know, but I'm very candid, I am not a developer, by nature, you know that.
Yeah.
I've been fortunate enough to develop, to have successful businesses, Brad as well, he's more of a developer than I am. But to be candid, when I see the frustration that's going on, we are, the delays that happen, regardless of where they stand, regardless of whose fault they are, there seems to be a disconnect between your vision, our vision, and getting to the finish line. And I don't, I think that we owe it to everyone that's involved in this process to find the fastest, most competent way to get these answers for the team that's involved. I will share with you, and I probably, it's not with, you know, it's not my, my project in total, obviously, I don't stand here representing all of Southfields, but we are in serious danger of losing developers, national developers, because of the delays that are happening here in the town. And they are not normal and not the same as they are everywhere else. They are going to be, they're gonna be up against it to decide whether to stay here or go to someplace else that's more willing to work with them. And I'm just being candid with you. This is, this is Mike Brown, not Ray Jackson, I'm not standing here representing anyone. As a town person who's put his logo on the line, along with Brad, who have settled property and we're coming to you for help, I think we owe it to each other to find a better way. I really do. I think we need to look at it and find a better way to get it done. I think it's too easy to sit back on maybe the way we've done things for 30 years and say that's good enough, because I don't believe it is. I think we owe it to each other to do better.
Well, listen, I appreciate your candor, and I really don't know what to say about that, from what you just stated.
I think we can work together outside of this meeting to do that maybe, but I, the frustration is real, the money that we're gonna have to pay on the special tax district now because of the delays that are now going to cost millions, not, not hundreds of thousands, not tens of thousands, millions. The interest rates and the housing we're missing because of how long people are taking, regardless of, we're not pointing fingers, I'm saying we all owe it to each other to make a better job out of this. So I'm going with my soapbox, I apologize.
Yeah, listen, it's, we're a team, and, and we have to make sure, I mean, this is a vision of this board, and we're gonna make it happen. And I can commit to you, as I'm sitting here, I'll speak for the board here a little bit, I'll put the finger on a few of these things to see where we need to go, because I think the communication in general needs to be better. And I think we did better. I mean, we are getting better, but we do want it done.
And we're here, you know, we're at the table, we're willing to do the legwork, we're willing to, you know, front and pay for some of those things to expedite some of that. It's, and if there's anything that anybody needs from even one of us, just let us know, we're, we're here.
We're accessible, we're here, we're ready to meet with you anytime you want, there's no time we can't come here and meet with you, we're five minutes down the road.
Yeah.
And to solve problems or anything we can do to make things happen faster, it just should not be this difficult.
Very good.
Yeah, you bring up a very good point, because I often go to Middletown and see a friend of mine who's in the sister living facility, but over this past year, you go and you see where there's gonna be a house, you wanna see a house. And eventually you see the houses going up, and I keep saying to myself, the houses going up, but there's nobody there. But then you go another couple of weeks, then you see somebody has moved in, somebody has moved in, and then you got a field. And then all of a sudden, you see a school going up, and you see a few vehicles out there, they're working, and now all of a sudden, there's a school. So somewhere along the line of the process, something happens, there's been a cooperation, because you see one, you see the next, you see the next, and you see the next. And obviously, there's people moving in from the outside, so somebody's doing a job of getting those individuals there.
Exactly.
To fruition for, you know, both sides of them, wherever they may be.
And I will tell you that us, as people living in the town, and you as the commissioners and mayor, I know you've asked the developers, national developers that come to the table and do the same things they're doing in Westchester and Middletown and Newark, but we're not helping them do it. We are not helping them do it. That's just my, that's my opinion, and I think that we can do a better job of helping, facilitate that and make it successful for us, because at some point, we're all, it's gonna be less than you. And we need to do a better job of helping each other.
And certainly you don't want any shortfalls in that process, because it's gonna be like when you say you are down.
Yep, exactly.
So what would be our next step? And where do we go from here to expedite or? Well, there's, there's, of course, you know, let alone the process, I mean, you've got a lot of processes, go through the planning committee, that has to happen.
Sure.
You gotta follow the rules and the regulations, that has to happen. But I think that what we can attempt to do, and I'm not, is to communicate, I mean, to communicate, and, you know, I would, I would say this thing with the bond rating, we're gonna move forward with that. I mean, I felt we were moving forward with it, I didn't know that we were waiting on the feasibility study to come back, but that's okay. We're on it today. But I think that, I would ask, I would almost ask you guys to come back, at least every other meeting, and give us an update on where things are, and we'll give you an update on where we're at. And I think that with the whole project, I would, I don't see, I see some representatives of Southfields on there, but I think it's always good to come in every other week and give us an update. I know that, I'd like to know a little bit more about where the water tower is, I'd like to know where we stand, what are obstacles on the road, the boulevard going in, and these are all important for all of us. So I, Mike, I feel your pain, because I know as soon as these interest rates started going up, it throws a little bit of a wrinkle in the sheet per se, and it has, and it's a lot more money. And I know, we talked about those bonds earlier for the special taxing district. I remember seeing the initial paperwork where it was just a couple percent, but I think that everyone that knows a little bit about finance knows that those bonds, the interest on those bonds are gonna have to be several points higher. Which doesn't sound like a lot, but it's probably another four or five million dollars to the people that live in that district.
That could have been invested elsewhere, that we could have used here to help our community, that we're not gonna be paying to a bank, and there's no reason to do that. We could do it better together if we just figured a better way, but if we just sit on the same thing we've been doing, it's gonna delay and delay and delay, and we're gonna end up with travel pro being across the street without the things that we have committed to do, which is the sports park and the houses. I am scared that that would happen, and I don't want that to happen, as a taxpayer and a person who is a business owner.
No, I don't think it, I know that we don't want that to happen.
We don't want that to happen.
Any other comments or questions?
No, I think that's fine. Thank you. And we are small businesses, so please come out on Saturday to see Brad and I.
All right, very good. And listen, I wanna let you know on another note, of course, I really do appreciate both you guys and the other businesses that you provide to the town. Brad, I can tell you that our downtown was, there's some struggles there, and you committed, and you put in a brewery, and a lot of people haven't realized that commitment, and it was a huge commitment, and thank you for that. And Mike, you know, I came to you guys about Patriots Glen with it going up for auction, and quite frankly, you stepped up. You acquired a parcel of land, a golf course that was struggling, and if anyone hasn't been out there in a while, it's, you're killing it, man. I mean, you've done, it's, you know, going back to, you know, one of my favorite words, the Disney-esque, looking at the quality of this, looking at what's been happening at Elk River, looking at what's happening at Patriots Glen Golf Course, there is no question what the final product's gonna be on that sports box, there's none.
We agree.
There's none. And you're right, you're, anyone that's been involved in travel sports, I think, I'm trying to think of the individual's name that I recently spoke to, the dollars are even going up more, even during these times, the parents are spending more of their dollars into this, into this. It's amazing. It's amazing, and I think it's gonna continue. Well, you got great coaches like Commissioner Gibbons. I can't say much about Earl, but. He's not gonna say anything?
No, we can wait till he gives it to you.
Well, I don't know about all that now, wait a second here.
I'm not even prepared myself.
Okay. Well, listen, thank you guys so much for coming, and thank you for sharing that with us, and I know you're investing a lot of money, and I feel it.
Thank you.
Okay, where are we at here? Nothing new for me to report, Commissioner Gibbons? Commissioner Pollard?
Yeah, I have update for the Parks and Rec, for the update for fall 2022. Neighborhood Community Center has been very busy with a lot of activities for the ages of the youth and adults. Their facilities have been a lot of rentals. Our following upcoming programs include programs for the toddlers, craft sports, cooking, the youth for paint, crafts, science, and the senior crafts, they have the bingo and dance. Over 20 classes each week, open gym for basketball, open gym for volleyball, and youth basketball league, or over 200 youth registered for the fall. Our weekends and many of weeknights are already busy with a number of rentals, birthday parties and baby showers. We also welcome the Judy Center Playgrounds twice a week, the infants and toddlers programs as needed, the senior exercise classes, they have the karate, tai chi, and line dancing, offered by the Cecil County Healthy Option Programs for seniors twice a week. And then kinship support group with the Cecil County Department of Social Service, and after-school programs ran by the Boys and Girls Club every day after school. And we are continuing to work with the community organization to provide services to our residents, and we'll continue to expand our programs, offering to meet the needs of the community. So they really active all summer long, really, putting out the needs of the community, I want to thank Mary McColl and her staff for actually having all these different obstacles through the summer.
Appreciate your report.
And Jimmy does a great job whenever he gets the opportunity to make the floor a little spiky and span, so I don't know whether you report included that, I don't know how often he does that, but it's nothing like going into a gym, Lord's, or something like, looking at the floor, it makes a difference.
I have to tell you, I saw the floor and it looked brand new again. Better than brand new, actually, once you throw that wax on it, it looked fantastic. It'll be in great shape for hosting the thank you event. Rob?
The only thing I have is, we discussed when we first started today, that we met with Chris Beeman, is it?
Yes.
And John and Michael, I appreciate you guys joining us yesterday and taking that walk along the creek with us. It was very educational. The young man has got some very sound ideas to help to control our flooding. We have a lot more discussion, you know, but it does look promising. That's all I have.
Very good. Just a reminder, the Town of Elton has a decorating contest, the deadline to register is 12/16, and the winners will be announced a week later, a little less than a week later, on 12/21. But it would be great that if more people got involved in the decorating, and I would say, any of our small businesses wanted to decorate, we could come out and include you in the contest, it'd be great. All right, this is the time we open up the meeting for anyone that has anything to say for the good of the Town of Elton, anyone? Pat, you have anything you gotta say today?
Well, now that you asked, I just wanna congratulate Rob, beautiful article in the Wade about scouting.
Oh, thanks.
That was done very, very well.
I think the author is sitting two seats behind you.
Ooh, that was not me.
Oh, it wasn't? Matt's gonna give you a good plug here, Matt.
I appreciate it, Rob.
Carl Hamilton did it? Carl did, yeah.
Very good, thank you.
Nice article.
Thank you for that comment.
Thank you.
Anyone on our Zoom meeting have anything to say? Dan, are you listening? I see you're out there. Maybe.
Hey, hey, real quickly, how's the trash going at this point? We are progressing, we've actually made improvements, but there's always room for improvement, so it's a little learning curve, but what we're seeing out there, actually we checked- Actually, we checked out this morning, like a lot of neighborhoods are looking really well, truly surprising, so we got some successes, we got some we can do a little bit better, but you know, we run again.
Very good.
And Rob, I want to let you know that even Dan Hanley does a good job because every Monday he's calling Bingo for the senior citizen and it was real nice to walk in there this past Monday to see him in there. He had as much fun as they did, so it was nice to see the town giving back as important as.
Very good. Thank you, Dan, I didn't know that.
You love the jokes, it's all about the jokes, he loves them.
All right, I hear you. And I see one of our newest employees, Quinn, are you on there? Are you listening to us?
I am listening.
Fantastic. Are you still enjoying your job here at the Town of Elton?
I am.
Fantastic, we're glad to have you on board. Okay, this is the, no one else has anything to say? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.